All right, good evening Chairman, Chairwoman Healy, School Board members, Dr. Kistner. My name is Matt Townsend, I'm the Supervisor of Planning and GIS. And I'm just here tonight to give a brief presentation as to planning units, what they look like, what they are, and some certain facets of them. So we'll start again, what are planning units? Then we'll get into the, I'll show the previous planning units before I work this summer to update them, and then I'll show the post-update planning units. So planning units are small pieces of geography clumped together. They are a spatial data set, so they are maintained in a staff, staff-maintained geodatabase. They are key for the projections and the attendance areas. So the projections rely on the planning units because they are the smallest unit of analysis used throughout the projection model. And because of that, they are the building blocks that build attendance areas at all three levels. Just like all databases that staff maintains, maintaining this critical geodatabase is essential to providing reliable analysis, ensuring data integrity to foster data-driven One aspect of planning units, size, the size of planning units matters because the smaller they are, the finer the resolution you can have and increase the precision of all analysis. They also give you greater flexibility when planning attendance areas because of that smaller size. So, an example of that is, is on the screen here. So here is a hypothetical development right there inside this larger planning unit. And this is a real planning unit, but this is a hypothetical development, yeah hypothetical development. So after the, the labor-intensive process this summer of splitting the planning units, you can see that rather than this hypothetical development of say fifty houses being somewhere within this giant block, or I shouldn't say giant, just a large block, now you can see the increased precision that this hypothetical development is in this much smaller piece of geography. And that helps the projections, or in addition, that helps the projections because rather than saying, okay, this whole planning unit can be reassigned, you can have this smaller. So what if you only needed, say thirty children to be reassigned to better balance the enrollment? Now you can say, okay, this neighborhood, that's a density difference right there from this and from the rest of the planning unit. That may make sense if you look at, when you look at it as a larger picture, that it can go to a different attendance area, to a different school. So that is the work that happened and the reason for all that work that happened. It really, the, the work to refine the planning unit database began a year ago, ensuring that we had a good baseline in January of 2018 that our planning units matched the school assignments that were in the student info management database. So then the summer to better position the school division for this redistricting effort, we went ahead and, and made them smaller. The previous planning units, here's what they looked like. There were two hundred twenty-nine total. And then, the updated planning units, you can see a lot of splitting of these larger rural, rural planning units, and that's mainly because it's, they're just easier to see than all these ones in here, in the more dense area of the county. And here's a little graphic I put together, kind of showing the difference there, just to help visualize the, the breaking of the planning units. And just a note about the, the improved planning units, so the, as an, for elementary school students, the old planning units averaged fifty-four elementary school students. So that's a large chunk to bal, to try to balance enrollment with a median of thirty-nine and a maximum of two hundred fifty, and that's using this year's students. The new planning units, the improved planning units averaged thirty elementary school students with a median down from thirty-nine to twenty-three and with the maximum at a hundred eighty-five. And there were only, there were less than, I hate to put a number, there were only a handful of planning units with larger than a hundred elementary school students. And that's a, a hundred, that's not a threshold that we need to worry about, it's just where, where does it make sense? So I'm happy with, with where they're at going forward in this redistricting process. Any questions? Yeah? All right.
Trish, I have, I have one, and I, I think this is correct. The planning unit is the same for an elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. I mean, I think that's obvi, but, you know, when we, I think that's always something we're asked, like, it's one planning unit, three levels.
Yep, one planning unit has three assignments. Yep. Yes ma'am.
I don't know, is this question, oh, yeah, question asked. So, are we taking into consideration when we pull more than one smaller unit, that we're not pulling more than, more than, I don't know, how many disadvantaged, poor areas where we end up with a higher free lunch population in one school?
In terms of, through the redistricting process?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that I'll let the, the consultants answer that one.
Okay. Silence is golden. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to ArcBridge, I'll set them up real quick. You guys have handouts, and those are larger-scale maps to add detail to their presentation here.
Today we are presenting two plans for the SCPS elementary school attendance areas. These plans are based on the SCPS redistricting criteria. And the redistricting criteria is listed on this slide. Our goal was to balance enrollment across seventeen elementary schools. We had to look at proximity, contiguity, connectivity. We, we were told to use the SCPS planning units that Matt just spoke about, and keep the neighborhoods together as much as possible. And we were also supposed to use the ten-year enrollment projection data provided by SCPS. Here is the redistricting timeline, which is on the SCPS website. We are here. Today is January eighth, and we are presenting to the school board. On this slide, we just talk about the enrollment projection data and the capacity. And the capacity is given here for all ten, capacity is there, and the usage, based on the enrollment projection, we have it for all ten years. And the program capacity was adjusted as compared to the last presentation. And that was done to accommodate or to account for the ideal special education program placement. Based on the capacity data, we found that some schools were, were using, were up to capacity, and some were low, had low-capacity utilization. So we have Rocky Run, Stafford, Wide Water, Winding Creek, and these were the schools which were using, were at up-to-capacity, or at least in the ninety percent range. And the low-capacity utilization schools were Garrisonville and Rock Hill. So in the plans that you're going to see, you will see that Garrisonville and Rock Hill will receive areas, and planning units, and Winding Creek, Wide Water are going to be giving those planning units. The other thing that we had to look at was connectivity, contiguity. So in your existing attendance areas, there are some schools which have, do not have connected attendance areas. And you hear on this slide, I'm showing you Hampton Oaks, which has, which is in blue, and you can see three disconnected areas, which are part of Hampton Oaks attendance area. And also I'm showing you Park Ridge, which has a piece, a planning unit, or some planning unit, so it has a disconnected attendance area. The other schools, two schools which had a similar situation where the attendance areas were not contiguous were Falmouth, and you can see that there are two arrows showing Falmouth attendance area, and also Brent, there's a small area which is disconnected, and that area, the students are currently assigned to Brent. So now, this slide shows Plan A, and here what we have is, we have, it may be a little difficult to understand, but we are going to go through each school. So in red, you're going to see, what you're seeing is your existing attendance areas. And the color is showing you the proposed attendance areas. We have put in major roads, so for you to get...
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I, I really was trying to pay attention, could you just repeat which were which?
Sure.
I'm sorry, thank you.
No problem. The red is your existing attendance areas, the red outline. The colors are your, are proposed attendance areas for Plan A. Okay? So this is just an overall view of the county. What we are going to do is, we are going to go school by school, so that you can see how the attendance areas are different from the current versus the proposed. This particular slide shows you a seven-year view using the enrollment projection data. And this is, the numbers are based on Plan A, proposed boundaries. On the next slide, we have Plan B, and once again, the same symbology. The red outline is your existing attendance areas, and the color is the proposed attendance areas as per Plan B. The two plans, we just call them Plan A and Plan B. On the next slide here, we are showing Plan B, and we are showing the seven-year view. With this, what I'm going to do is go school by school, and what we, what we are going to do is, we are going to go geographically. So we'll start from the top of the county, and then we are going to work our way, school by school. So the first one that you will see in your handouts is Rock Hill. So Rock Hill, and if you look at Plan A and Plan B, this is what, what I call it, a summary slide for Rock Hill, where you can visually look at Plan A, the, once again, the red boundary is your existing attendance area, and the yellow is what we are proposing in Plan A and Plan B. And notice if you look at the table up top, that if we were not to do anything, the capacity utilization was sixty-five percent, and it kept on going, sixty-eight percent. And in the table, it's showing you a five-year view, and we have labeled the years on top. So the last year that you're seeing is twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So while working with Rock Hill, the neighboring schools that were affected as we were creating the new attendance areas were Brent and Garrisonville. Now, as per Plan A, this is the proposed boundary, which is in yellow, and the red is the old one. So we are proposing two changes. Change number one is that we are getting this area, all this area, from Brent, and we are putting it into Rock Hill. Change number two is that we are taking a small area from Rock Hill, and we are giving it to Garrisonville. And on the right-hand side, we have listed all the neighborhoods that would be affected. And once again, you know, we did use planning units as were provided by SCPS. The second slide shows Plan B for Rock Hill, and once again, the schools that would be affected are Brent and Garrisonville. So you can see that all this area from Brent has been assigned to Rock Hill. And this little area has been taken away from Rock Hill and assigned to Garrisonville. And in your handouts that you have been provided with, Rock Hill and, I mean, Rock Hill, Plan A, Plan B, and all the schools are there in your handouts, and we have more details like neighborhoods, like parcels, like major roads, minor roads, so you could see how, which areas, and you could look at that, we have more detail in those.
Quick, just a quick comment. I, I would, for the next iteration of Plan A, Plan B, I would, it would help, be helpful if you highlighted in red or a different color the Plan B differences from Plan A, like these ten neighborhoods added, instead of on the map, so we're not playing, you know, mapology nine oh six, right? So that would help, be very helpful.
Sure.
And be helpful to the folks that are actually in those neighborhoods to say, hey, Plan B is not my, where Plan A is where I want to be, so.
Yeah.
It would just save everyone, I think, some, thank you.
Okay.
The comment that I had was that I was helped by the chairwoman here.
You didn't get them.
We, we wanted to hold all the questions until the end, because we have so much to cover.
She's got an hour presentation.
Okay. But if you know what the, the main difference is, to mention that. Like, to me, these two look so similar, and trying to do the comparison with my eyes, if you could say, well, you know, district this or that is omitted, or whatever, that will help tone down the questions right now.
Sure. So now we move on to Brent, and like we said, we are going to traverse the county geographically. So from Rock Hill, we are now looking at Brent. And the table, we, the program capacity is listed on this slide. And then what we also do here is, in the current existing boundaries, Plan A, Plan B, we compare those, and we compare how we are using the capacity of this school. So now here in Plan A, we are giving this particular area, if you look at my cursor, we are giving it to Rock Hill. And you can see the differences in this a little bit better, because in Rock Hill, the differences were kind of subtle, but here you can see how we are trying to make Brent more compact in Plan B and Plan A, so you can see that. The schools affected are Rock Hill, Garrisonville, Winding Creek, Falmouth, and Hartford. And these are basically all the schools which are the surrounding schools. Now to look at Plan A boundary, here, one, change number one is that we are moving this area from Brent. When I say this area, I mean the one which is showing up as yellow right now, because the current Brent boundary is over here, and we are picking these planning units, these areas, and assigning them to Rock Hill. Okay? So change number two is the change that we talked about, and you had seen it in Rock Hill as well. We are assigning them to Garrisonville, this area here. Then three, we are assigning a small area of Brent that you had seen before, we are assigning it to Falmouth, because it's closer to Falmouth, okay? Four, we are providing relief to Winding Creek. We are taking some area from Winding Creek and assigning it to Brent, and then from Hartford. We have listed all the neighborhoods here, and we have also provided in your handout a detailed map, which has more, the neighborhoods listed, et cetera.
Put this one here.
Yes, sir. So that is Plan A, and now we are going to go to Plan B on the next slide. Apologize, here we have a listing of the neighborhoods from Brent to Rock Hill, because we could not fit it on the same slide. So this is Plan B, and in Plan B, we have five changes. One of them is, we are assigning this area to Rock Hill. We are taking some from Garrisonville, and the same change, you know, the little piece of Brent that was down here, we are assigning it to Falmouth. This area down here, we are assigning it to Winding Creek. And then we are taking some area from Hartford and assigning it to Brent. And these are the neighborhoods that would be affected, from Brent to Rock Hill. Now we move on to Garrisonville, and you have a slide, you have a handout for Garrison, Plan A, Plan B. So here again, if you look at it, Plan A has a different configuration, and Plan B has a different configuration. The red lines, like I said before, are existing attendance areas, and the color, the pink color, is what the proposed boundary would be. And the schools affected are Brent, Barrett, Park Ridge, Rock Hill, and Winding Creek. And notice how, you know, the, you, percent utilization was sixty-three and sixty-two, all the way up to five years, and with the rebalancing of, of the student data, we have, we are now getting up to eighty-four and eighty-seven percent utilization in Garrisonville. Now Plan A, we have some changes here, and from Rock Hill, we are getting some area from Rock Hill, from Brent, from Winding Creek down here, and then we are giving some area to Barrett, and we are also giving some area to Park Ridge. Plan B for Garrisonville, and the same we have up from Rock Hill, we are giving some to Brent, from Winding Creek, from Barrett up here, and from Park Ridge. Now we move on to Winding Creek. Notice how Winding Creek, if we were not to do anything, coming two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, it would be above its capacity. So with the rebalancing here, notice how we have changed that by changing the boundaries. So even up to five years out here, we would be at eighty-eight and eighty-six percent in Plan A and Plan B. The schools affected are Burns, are Burns, Brent, Garrisonville, Park Ridge, and Stafford. A detailed view of Plan A. So from Plan A, in Plan A, we are giving some area to Garrisonville from Winding Creek. Then we are giving some area, this area right here, to Brent. This area has been given to Stafford, and up north to Park Ridge. So here, if you notice, we are not taking from anybody, because, I mean, we're already up to capacity, so we are giving away areas to our neighboring schools, so that we have capacity here. In Plan B, we have a slightly different configuration. So here, but we still have the same neighboring schools, so we are giving some to Garrisonville up here. Change number two here, in this part, and if you follow my cursor, then you would be able to see the area, we gave to Brent, okay? Then here, we took some from Burns, and we gave some to Park Ridge, and we got some from Brent. So it was like we moved, moved, and we worked with our neighboring schools to provide you with another scenario. And once again, the maps, Plans, Plan A and B, detailed maps are in your handouts. Now we move on, move on to Park Ridge. And Park Ridge, if we were not to do anything, Park Ridge would be at seventy-three percent, even up to the fifth year out, so we wanted to utilize the capacity there. So in Plan A, we have this configuration, and in Plan B, we have a slightly different configuration. So the schools affected are obviously the neighboring schools. So we have Barrett up north, we have Garrison We have Garrisonville. We have Moncur and we have Winding Creek. Now in Plan A, remember when I started in the beginning, I told you Parkridge has disconnected attendance areas. So there was this red area, red boundary, that was Parkridge and this little piece was Parkridge. So what we did was we took these areas and we gave them to Barrett, okay? And then we gave this area, which is these neighborhoods here, and we gave them to Moncur because Moncur was a school in closer proximity, okay? Then we got some from Garrisonville here and we got some from Winding Creek. Now Plan B here is, once again, some of the changes are the same as we did in Plan A. But, so this change number two remains the same in A and B, okay? In one, change number one, we gave all this area to Barrett. Okay? Two, like I said, remain the same. Three, we gave some area to Garrisonville, okay? And then we, remember, we were trying to help Winding Creek. So we got all this area from Winding Creek. Now we move on to Barrett. And Barrett is, once again, you know, seventy-three, seventy-seven to seventy-three percent utilization. And with these new Plans A and B, we changed the boundaries and we were able to utilize the capacity a little bit more. So just to give you a visual for Plan A, you can see Plan A has a slightly different configuration for, for the attendance area. And then we have Plan B here. And the schools that were affected were Garrisonville, Parkridge, Hampton Oaks. Now to explain the changes, we took all, remember, the red line is what it is, the existing boundary. So we took all this area from Garrisonville, from this area from Garrisonville, and we gave it to Barrett. We took this, this area from Parkridge and we gave it to Barrett. And we took us, one, we took a small area from Hampton Oaks and gave it to Barrett. In Plan B, we have it slightly different. But we are still, here we are giving some areas to Garrisonville. We are taking from Parkridge because Parkridge is going to help Winding Creek. So we are taking from Parkridge. And we're also taking some from Hampton Oaks. Now we move on to Hampton Oaks. Hampton Oaks, remember, has three disconnected pieces. So what we did was, and its utilization was seventy-seven percent. And with Plan A and Plan B, we are using it better. So we are getting almost up to eighty-eight, eighty-six percent usage. So if you, and the schools affected are Barrett, Burns, Moncur, and Parkridge. In Plan A, what we have done is we gave this area to Barrett. We gave this part of Hampton Oaks to Parkridge. We took some from Burns. And as we go down, I'll explain how Burns also needed some relief. So we took some area from Burns. And this particular area, these two areas, we gave them to Moncur because Moncur is closer. Now in Plan B, we have these two areas that we gave to Barrett. And in Plan B, what we did was we gave all these three disconnected pieces, we gave them to Moncur. And we took some from Moncur to balance it all out. Burns, Burns is one of the schools. If we did nothing, you know, it's quite, it's like eighty-seven percent. And by the fifth year, it would be ninety-six percent. So we decided to change it a little bit for Plan A and Plan B so that it would be up to eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent, eighty-eight, eighty-seven percent in the fourth and fifth years out. So you can see visually. And then in the next slides, I will explain the neighborhoods. The schools affected are Hampton Oaks, Moncur, Stafford, and Winding Creek. In Plan A, what we did was we gave this area, which used to be a part, we, we gave this area to Hampton Oaks. So this was a part of Burns, but with Plan A, it would be part of Hampton Oaks. And then we took this area, which used to be a part of Moncur, and we gave it to Burns. In Plan B, what we did was we took some area from Stafford, okay? And we gave some parts to Winding Creek. Now moving on to Moncur. Moncur used to be like going out all the way here as shown in the red outline. And if, once again, if we did nothing, you know, these, it would be up to seventy-seven percent capacity utilized. So we changed it around a little bit so we could utilize the space more in Plan A and Plan B. The schools affected were Burns, Hampton Oaks, Parkridge, and Wide Water. So in Plan A, we got some from Hampton Oaks. And while it shows that it's getting all these things from Hampton Oaks, these are the three disconnected pieces or the two are going here to Moncur, okay? So we are collecting some from Hampton Oaks. Two, we're, two is to Hampton Oaks. We are giving it to Hampton Oaks, all this area that used to be Moncur. We are getting this area from Wide Water and we are giving it to Moncur. To Burns, we are giving this area to Burns. And we are getting this area from Parkridge. In Plan B, we are getting some areas from Hampton Oaks and from Parkridge, from Wide Water, and to Hampton Oaks. Remember, we had all these three pieces. So we gave them all to Moncur. Wide Water, now we are moving on to Wide Water. And Wide Water is one of those schools which was at ninety-four percent capacity. And that's how it would be. So we took away. So we'll talk about that in the next slide. But here we made some minor changes and the schools affected were only Moncur. So here in Plan A, we gave this little piece to Moncur and the neighborhoods are listed here. And in Plan B, we did the same, but we gave a few, two, two or three more neighborhoods to Moncur. So moving on to Stafford. If you look at the current capacity, so Stafford is one of those which is greater than ninety percent. And it has a steady trend. So by year five, it would be ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. So we got some areas from, or we actually gave some areas to Grafton Village. And we worked with Burns, Grafton Village, and Winding Creek. And in the next slides, I'm going to show you exactly the neighborhoods that would be affected by them. So in Plan A, this whole area that used to be Stafford, we are now assigning it to Grafton Village. And then we are making a little change here. We are getting this from Winding Creek and giving it to Stafford. In Plan B, this whole area, which used to be Stafford, is now going to be assigned to Grafton Village. And a little area up here to Burns. Now we move on to Grafton Village. And you're kind of going to see the same changes but with the view of Grafton, okay? So Grafton area has increased in Plan A and Plan B because we are trying to provide some relief to Stafford. So the schools affected are Stafford, Conway, and Ferry Farm. In Grafton Village, Plan A, this area has been taken, has been assigned from Stafford to Grafton Village. And there is a small area of Grafton Village that we are giving to Conway and a small area to Ferry Farm. In Plan B, we are giving this, assigning this area, taking it from Stafford and assigning it to Grafton Village. In two, we are taking these areas from Ferry Farm and we are assigning them to Grafton Village. We are taking some areas from Conway and assigning some to Conway. Now we move on to Conway. And Plan A and Plan B are, we are showing different configurations for the attendance areas. The schools affected are Falmouth, Ferry Farm, Grafton Village, and Rocky Run. In Plan A, this area that used to be a part of Falmouth attendance area is being assigned to Conway. This area, as well as this area down here, these were from Falmouth going to Conway. Now Ferry Farm used to come all the way up. So we have taken that area from Ferry Farm and assigned it to Conway. Two neighborhoods from Grafton Village have been assigned to Conway. And this whole area that used to be a part of Conway, we have assigned it to Ferry Farm. And Rocky Run needed some help. So we got some neighborhoods from Rocky Run and assigned them to Conway. Plan B for Conway. So here, what we did was all this area that used to be, or that is Conway's attendance area, has been assigned to Grafton Village. Two, second changes from Falmouth, we assigned it to Conway. And we kept this area that used to be Conway's. So we kept it with Conway. And we got a little, small area from Grafton Village. Moving on to Falmouth. The schools affected are Brent, Conway, Ferry Farm, and Hartford. Falmouth was one of those attendance areas which had discontinuous pieces here, disconnected pieces. So in Plan A, we took, we kept one piece and we gave the other to Brent. But we'll talk about it in the next slide. But here, schools affected were Brent, Conway, Ferry Farm, and Hartford. Now to describe the changes in Plan A. And this is what we talked about in Conway as well. So it's the same change, but because we are going school by school, so we wanted to show that. So this area, which used to be Falmouth, is now assigned to Conway. This area used to be Hartford. So we got it from Hartford and assigned it to Falmouth. Ferry Farm, we got this area from Ferry Farm and we assigned it to Falmouth, from Rocky Run, and from Brent. So in Plan B, what we did here is we took some area of Falmouth and assigned it to Conway. We got some areas from Hartford, from Ferry Farm. And we gave this, it used to be a part of Falmouth. We gave it to Rocky Run. And we got that little piece from Brent and we assigned it to Falmouth. Moving down to Ferry Farm. In Ferry Farm is one of the schools where the capacity is around seventy, seventy-six, seventy-one percent. Here with Plan A and Plan B, we are utilizing the capacity a little bit better. So in Plan A, notice how Ferry Farm used to go all the way up, okay? We changed that in Plan A and just kept it here. And in Plan B, we did let it go up, but not all the way up as it is currently. So the schools affected So the schools affected are Conway, Falmouth, Grafton Village, and Rocky Run. To describe the details in Plan A, from Conway, this area used to be, or is currently in Conway, we got that from Conway and assigned it to Ferry Farm. Small area from Grafton Village. And then we gave all this area up here, we gave it to Conway. And then we gave this area up, we gave it to Falmouth. In Plan B, we have given some areas here to Grafton Village, to Rocky Run. And we took some area from Rocky Run and we assigned it to Ferry Farm. Now coming to Rocky Run. Rocky Run is one of those schools which in the coming year would have been overcapacity. So we reassigned the areas in Plan A and Plan B and we are able to bring it down even in the fifth year to eighty-one percent, eighty-six percent utilization. The schools affected are, of course, the neighboring schools, which is Conway, Falmouth, Ferry Farm, and Hartwood. So in Plan A, we are giving this small area from Rocky Run, we are giving it, oh, sorry, from Rocky Run here, we are giving it to Conway. Two is this area which belongs currently to Rocky Run, we are giving it to Falmouth. And change number three is, we are giving this neighborhood from Rocky Run to Hartwood. In Plan B, we have this area, we have assigned it to Ferry Farm. Two, we are getting some areas from Ferry Farm. We are giving this area to Hartwood. And then we are getting some areas from Falmouth. Now we are moving on to Hartwood. And in Hartwood, we have changed the areas a little bit here. So the schools affected are Brent, Falmouth, and Rocky Run. So change number one is this area, which used to be Hartwood, we assigned it to Brent. Change number two is, this area, we gave it to Falmouth. And we got this area from Rocky Run, we gave it to Hartwood. The, for Plan B, so in Plan B, we did a little differently. We took these areas which belonged to Hartwood and we assigned them to Brent. We took this area, we took this area and we assigned it to Falmouth. And then here, this area from Rocky Run, we assigned it to Hartwood. With this, I have presented Plan A and Plan B to you. And we showed you an overall map and we also showed you each and every school, so those were Plans A and B.
Let me ask the, let me ask the board, do you want to take a little break before we start questions, or do you want to go right into questions? We have a little more time than I had anticipated after this presentation.
I have my question, and I mean...
We have about fifty. I'd like to break at ten off seven to give us a break before the meeting. Give us about fifty minutes for questions, or if you want to go right in, we can do that, too.
Well, I'm just concerned that a lot of the questions that we're going to have, I think some of our parents are going to have some of the same questions. So do we want to spend a whole lot of time on questions, or we want to save, do we want to save this for the town halls? You're, I assume you're going to be at the town halls?
Yes.
Some of our questions, if they have answers, then they might be able to get the answers in advance.
Fair enough.
I know I have to digest this before I'm in a position, I've got a lot of questions, but I need to really sit down and synthesize it and look at the A's and the B's. So if anyone has any, let's call it initial questions. What I'd like to do is, you know, go down the line to give everybody a chance, but I think we've got plenty of time right now. Did you have questions?
My question is just looking at some of these options, I wonder if bus rides were taking into consideration, were taken into consideration?
Yes, they were. We did discuss with Transportation. And they did review.
Because some of the examples that were seen, and just a quick Google map, putting in, you know, from point A to point B, some of these scenarios are essentially doubling their current commutes. So that's why I'm asking.
We did have a working, we showed them to Transportation and they did, they did, they said that they were workable.
Okay.
Can I, I'm going to ask a follow-up question. We'll give everybody a chance, if you don't mind. Do you know what the maximum bus ride will be after, you know, with each of these options? I mean, right now, it's about an hour.
It would...
Or K twelve.
I, they, when we discussed the plans and showed them the feasibility transportation-wise, they said they do not anticipate any major changes.
Yeah, let me follow up, if you don't mind.
These are questions, Missy, will you be taking these questions down? Because you may not have the answers, but these are answers that we'd like to get, at least to the initial questions.
So, so a quick follow-up to that, not my question, is that it's going to be a little, it's going to be a data drill, but it should not be that hard to go ahead and drill down, Barry, on each bus ride. Fifty-nine, twenty-nine, thirty-nines. So there'll be absolutely no question about, I mean, is that correct, Barry?
Yes, that is correct.
If you could, anyone answering questions, if you can come to the podium, because this is being taped and I want to make sure that, you know, whoever is watching the tape has an opportunity to hear these responses.
We will be able to provide general, and Barbara in particular, worked with the consultants to make sure that the times were not going to exceed what we have. And in a lot of cases, it's going to bring the times down. It is time-consuming to take, I mean, we've got the software that can do it, but it will take some labor hours to get everything together if we figured in every student and every route in the county.
Yeah, so that's, that's my question and my, it'll save a lot of pain in the long run, when we come to continual questions about, and we all have heard of them, bus ride, bus ride, bus ride. Well, what is it, you know, Eel Estates? Well, that's twenty-nine minutes. And we got it right here and we did a GPS. So those would be, I think, beneficial for later on, even though I know it's going to be some pain on a data drill. So, just my thoughts.
Yeah, and, and I will tell you, the mistake I made when we did this four years ago was in looking at the areas, I had instructed staff, and I did some of them myself, some of the different rides, and Greenspring in particular, down to this end of the county. And I didn't take into account the wayside and that type of thing, so we've really, you know, we'll really take a look, but it will be labor-intensive.
And if, if it's possible, I know the town halls start next week, I think it would be helpful if we had that information available, you know, for the public. If that's not going to be possible, well, we're going to, we're going to need to have it.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll work together as close as we can, just two things, just to, Barry did mention that there's a lot of these routes that are actually are going to be less time now. So I know they work close and I was at the meeting last week, I guess it was last week, and what I heard, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that based on the preliminaries, but we'll go deeper, based on the preliminaries, you guys did not see any, I didn't hate these terms, increase, but you saw in a range that we have.
Yes, yes. And in fact, we, Transportation was happy with what we saw, especially bringing in some of these outliers that really, at this point, create issues for us.
Madam Chair, real quick, just another, before we go on to the next question.
I think we have time.
Yeah, so...
We've got fifty minutes.
The software that you're using, is it smart enough to know the traffic trends in the area? I mean, you talked, wayside is a perfect example, it could take you twenty minutes to get through the wayside.
We, we can go in and adjust speeds and do things like that, but as far as that picking it up real-time, no.
Okay, because that seems to be a chronic issue in this county at the moment with the traffic. So that's going to have to be part of the, of looking at the time. So whether it's, we need to go, you know, purchase some new software that can adjust for the, for that, you know, anomaly, if you want to call it that, that's going to have to be part of diagnosing what it is, that the time, the time is going to be on the school buses.
And I try to stay up with all the vendors that are out there with software, and I don't think there's anybody in Transportation right now who can account for that type of thing. That's why the software is perfect, the routing software is perfect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suddeth. You know, if you don't mind, we all know who you are, but for those who are going to be watching this in the future, if you could just tell everybody your name and title.
I'm Barry Suddeth, I'm the Executive Director of Transportation and Fleet Services.
And we appreciate your work very much.
And we appreciate your work.
Very much.
Very much.
Did you have anything else, Ms. Egan, for now? Okay, Dr. Chase.
So, I don't know if you all have it, I was just curious if Plan A and Plan B, if you have sort of the total number of students who will be moved. So in Plan A, how many elementary school students get moved? In Plan B, how many elementary schools get moved? And I don't know if that's available or not.
If you could come up and give that answer. Again, we're, we're taping this because a lot of people couldn't be here tonight, but there will be a significant interest in this presentation on the part of the community. So I want to make sure that everything that is said is represented on the, on the tape. Thank you.
We can get those numbers for you.
And can you have that for us before the town hall meeting?
We could get that.
Is that a yes? I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to...
We can get that information, but keep in mind that we are working with enrollment projection data. So if you're thinking of exact numbers, those are projected numbers.
I'm really only interested in, like, next year, right? I'm sorry.
I mean, this summer.
Yeah, I'm interested in the first year, not, not ten years out.
Yeah, because then they start getting soft out there. Yeah, next year, yes, we can do that.
Madam Chair, I think it would also be beneficial for us to also have some background on the last redistricting that we, that we did. How many of these kids are being moved again, is, is going to be asked. And I want to be able to have facts in front of me when they say, well, we've moved three times or four times, which is, Jamie and I have gotten emails before. I would like to have that data in front of me, so I can be articulate about how I'm going to respond. And I think that's important, because we, we have always said, we don't want to move the kids too many times and within a seven-year period. So I think just having that information will be helpful when we have to make a decision.
And, and we also had a plan that we were going to move more students, but that didn't happen. We had a Part A and a Part B the last time we districted, but that didn't happen in anticipation of Moncur being built and expanded and then relooking at all this, too. So I don't know if you want that data as well, you know, what the plan was to move and...
I don't, I don't think that's relevant if they haven't been moved. There's really not an argument to, well, you can't move me because I was supposed to be moved and didn't move. I mean, I think that they're fair game. So...
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Dr. Chase?
I do, I didn't know if we were going down.
Well, given, given the fact that we've got another forty-five or so minutes, I think we can multi-question.
Another question I had was just if you have sort of, can give us a little bit of an idea of what does, what does free and reduced lunch look like next year at these schools? Is it changing? What, what are the percentage differences? And I don't know if you have that or not.
We have existing, which is current, then Plan A and Plan B.
Do we have that here?
You do, it's on, it's on the agenda, it's available to everyone in public opinion. I think it's called handouts.
Okay, so separate.
Yeah, this is going to take me a while.
So, so, I'm sorry, where's the free lunch on here?
I just noticed an error, error here, this should have been free lunch, so I'm going to make that change and then only you update it on the website. So the first one is minority percentage, this one is free and reduced lunch, and this is limited English proficiency. Somehow we missed that, the label.
So how did you make the cor, did you make any correlations between the minority and the free lunch?
No, it's all based on data.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's what it was here.
And all this data is based on the current enrollment data that was provided to us.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Dr. Chase?
Is, is that information, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead. Just popped in my head and I opened my mouth, that was rude. Is that particular slide in our information that we were given?
It should be. It should be.
Sorry.
She said it, she didn't...
I don't need to be heard being retarded.
Yeah, we are going to make that edit.
Was it presentation slides, or was it...
Part of the presentation slides.
Where is it? It's not here.
It's just behind the questions, after the questions.
But it needs to be corrected.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was a good catch. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McCosker.
McCosker. Okay, I have five questions, I could, I'll happily go last, but my first question, which I asked Matt, is the same question, it's on, the same question that I asked Matt, I ask you, but Dr. Chase already asked the question. But I want to stress that, so it's human nature to fear the unknown. And individuals, once they see a high population of minority and slash, you know, a high free lunch, they start transferring. So I just want to make sure that we address transferring and the reasons why individuals transfer even after we do, you know, this across the board, redistricting. So it's kind of, it's not a question, it's a comment, it's a statement. It's a question that probably people think in their mind, but don't raise, but then the effect comes after. And I think I know the answer to this question, that if you choose Plan A, you can choose parts of Plan A and parts of Plan B, but I was just wondering, off the top of my head, if it doesn't affect the area around it, can you do that? And I thought the answer would be no, but I thought I would ask, because people may ask that question.
Fair to ask.
Yeah.
Well, you asked, what's the answer?
The answer is, I don't know. It's difficult, because, you know, you move one part, then the other part gets moved, and then you have to balance, so it kind of, it's not like you could work with one school in isolation. It goes with the neighborhood.
Unless it's not affected at all, I thought maybe. Unless it's not affected at all, I thought maybe.
Yeah.
My question number three, are all these areas, within these five years, are they all developed?
That is something that I would not be able to answer, because it's part of projection, so I don't know.
Matt Townsend, Supervisor of Planning, the enrollment projections include approved residential developments, and they are built into the, to the projection model according to developer info, planning, county planning info. So, anything that's been approved and that's current and, and building, yes, that development is, is within the ten-year, or the five-year window. And maybe some, some developments that are not yet building, but are projected, or we anticipate to begin building, are also included.
Okay, thank you. Question number four, this, this is not mean to be a joke, but Rosna Auto Park, I, I think I know that's a, a trailer park in an area, but Acquire Business Center is a center, do people live? Yeah, okay, I just want to, affordable suites, I thought was senior, a senior home.
That's apartments.
It's an apartment, okay.
Hotels.
Okay, okay, I got it, alright.
Isn't it hotels?
Yeah, I thought it was.
Long-term, long-term residence hotels.
Okay, I got it, so I know, okay, fine. And then, the capacity moved downwards, and I guess now the answer would be because of projections. Ferry Farm went from ninety and then it moved downwards to eighty-seven.
Special ed, special ed, because of special ed placement.
Okay, and then my last question, the physical location of the school on the map, is that exactly the actual location where it is when you were showing it?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause then some areas that you moved actually will be further away from where they were before, so that's something that we will hear, you know, parents complain about, I'm further away than, than I was walking to school versus now I gotta take the bus kind of thing, so. Yeah, I'm done with those questions.
I have a follow-up on that, for when we have our town hall meetings, if there is any thought that has already been put into potential walking zones that crossed my mind when you just made that comment, that's probably something we need to be prepared to address.
And a follow-up to your follow-up is Park Ridge, very difficult. So, anything that you're moving back in, we, we need to address, Barry, bus and walking. You know, individuals are actually parking in the library and trying to walk over or waiting for the kids to cross. It's, it's a very busy area, we just need to come up with some kind of resolve there.
Can we put that chart back up? I'm still looking at it. Since we don't have it in our package, I can't peek. Okay, if, if nobody minds. It's just hard to read across the lines. Ms. Decatur, did you have anything for now? No? Ms. Hazard?
Sure, always. Let's see, I have probably three. Has the middle school feeder patterns, a couple of them, when you were mentioning them, I was trying to do in my, my head, with, how the middle school, is there sort of an analysis that the middle school feeder patterns? I know that wasn't, it appears it wasn't one of our criteria, but that would be, if I was a parent, something I would certainly want to know. Is there some way that we can be able to have that, check that, even if it's that night, that you all would have the database of the middle school, just so we can sort of see how the middle school feeder patterns, they looked, there are only a few that jumped out at me of changes.
We can, we can put the middle school boundaries, so people can see that.
I think that would be helpful for people to kind of. A couple of them definitely will, that jumped out, just, just for parents to see, and it may not change that much, but.
Yeah.
You've sat through these before, but just sort of seeing maybe on top of.
Just show the middle school line, because the middle school attendance areas haven't changed and won't change at all.
And I understand that, but it's more putting.
Overlay on top, just to see where, how they break down.
If any of them sort of really go from a, gosh, I was in this school and now I'm way over here, or it may be fixing them. I, I'm actually hoping it fixes some of the, the sort of crazy ones that we have now, but I think that may be information. I'm trying to think ahead, Ms. Healy, like you were saying, what may come up? And I think parents are always gonna say, okay, if this change happens.
So, you're thinking a map with, with the middle school lines laid on top, right?
I'm gonna defer to you all, I just think it's something that's gonna come up, does that make sense? I will defer on how to present it.
And we want to make it clear, we are not looking at redistricting middle schools right now, is that correct? No, I, I know, I just don't want the message to get a little.
It was more to understand.
No, it's a good question.
The over, I call it an overlay, but that may be the wrong one.
And, and one of our criteria is feeder patterns, and, and that's something that, you know, people are always concerned about. I don't want my child to be at a school, to be the only neighborhood that's going on to the next one.
But the question that, I'm sorry, did, was it answered? Would any one school, middle school change because their elementary school changed?
They're gonna get us, no.
The middle school won't change.
Middle school are not changing, that's.
It's just really whether, when.
Not now.
My, my way of saying it is, whether, when they change, are they going into a good feeder? I'm hoping we fix some, to be honest, and I would love to show if we fix some too. But for the, you know, sometimes that helps us identify separate, some neighborhoods that really, all of a sudden, they're on a cusp between two middle schools, that sometimes that helps us tweak these, just for that reason.
I'm sorry, wouldn't the area though, if you moved an area that used to go to, say, for example, HH Pool, and now is going to Shirley, Shirleyheim or whatever, just, just an example, wouldn't that, the ones that go to Shirleyheim go to a particular middle school and not the previous one?
No, all, no, all we're talking about is elementary school redistricting, so.
I understand that.
The elementary schools, the, the neighborhood's pattern for the middle schools would not change unless the school board made a change, unless it was in the superintendent's discretion for less than five percent of the population or the criteria and the policy. But I just don't want people confused and think we're now talking about redistricting middle schools, which we are not.
So, the one question I had, and I didn't bring it up just because of this, it's a great question, and, and I had it as well, is, you know, the bottom line is the criteria, middle schools, middle school feeder patterns will not change, period. Don't go there.
End of story.
That's a statement with a hard period, and then, and then we'll talk about it later.
I do have a question. When was the last time we redistricted?
Which, which, elementary schools?
Yeah.
Actually, just about two years ago, we had some down in the, in the, yes, Falmouth and Ferry Farms and.
I think it was for.
We did like to, just like a couple APUs when we did.
Yeah. It was, it was to relieve overcrowding in, in some schools. Actually, this, this whole process arose from the acquisition of the North Star, Early Childhood Education Center. And, and that opened up a lot of classrooms for us. So, that's why we're looking at the entire county, which has, at least in, in, in the past twenty years, I can say, has never been considered or addressed. So, all right. Ms. Hazard's not done yet, go ahead.
I have two more, sorry.
That's all right, we have, we have time.
Well, I knew that, I didn't mean for that to open the can of worms, but I think it's one we need to be able to respond to clearly.
No, it needs to be clear to everyone that this is an elementary school redistricting. It has no impact on the middle schools or the high schools. Is that, everybody agree on that?
Perhaps in the.
I'm seeing, okay, all right.
And, because perhaps the frequently asked questions are one of that part, we can really make sure we address that, because it, it, it does appear confusing, but I know it's something we're gonna be asked, so. I guess the other one, somewhat, I guess, related to this chart, and please know I'm asking this knowing, we don't know exactly, but our future, I guess for lack of a better way to say it, schools that we believe that may qualify under our standards for Title I, was there any analysis of having the capacity in those schools be potentially a little bit lower? Saying that there is a higher free and reduced lunch? Would the, would we be looking at, and I know among all this stuff, if I can sit on a table, I can add them, but right now, I can't. I know that I have said that, I know about five times, so I'm sorry to keep repeating myself. I think that is something we as a board may want to look at, I'm just.
Can I jump on to that question?
Which one?
So, for example, we have Moncur, which in Plan B is going up to sixty-five percent free and reduced lunch. So, it would then be titled.
That's not the number though, remember, that's not free and reduced.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, yes, it is. And it's current.
Second column is free and reduced.
Oh, it is?
And its current number is twenty-eight percent, so it currently does not qualify for class size reduction. But at sixty-five percent, it will qualify for class size reduction, which would presumably change its program capacity. So, has that been taken into consideration in terms of what the capacity of that school is? And, and maybe there's enough wiggle room in the percentage, so. My, my argument, my comment.
I think she's gonna answer first.
We have just, we have computed these numbers, but we really have not cared about, you know, what the demographic characteristics is, because that was not something that we look at in redistricting. It's like after we did the plans, we came up with these numbers, and that's what they are, and that's what.
Okay, I, I want to ask you a question, on the, the free and reduce, which says limited English proficiency, but it's really free and reduced, where did those numbers come from? Because they don't look familiar to me when I'm looking at our current Title I schools. And I'm, I'm looking particularly at Ferry Farm, Ferry Farm's not Title I, right?
No.
No, Ferry Farm, and there's, what's the other one? That's the same, Hartwood, are basically the same percentages. And I thought, you know, that the schools that were Title I currently were up closer to forty percent. So, I mean, are these figures, are these figures accurate? And, and when did they change? This is a, a Mr. Townsend question, you don't have to.
I know Hamdanokisque.
So, the flag variables are in the student data set that we provided. That middle column, free or reduced lunch, it's free or reduced.
Okay.
Free qualifies for the, the class size reduction grant.
Oh.
So, something like thirty-two may not necessarily qualify under, under these plans. To your point, sixty-five is way up there.
But, but my point is Hartwood, I'm sorry. My point is Hartwood right now is Title I, is it not, Ms. Hazard? Hartwood is Title I, but this shows free and, oh, free or, what is this, free or reduced?
Free or reduced.
Is thirty-two percent, so how, how is that?
But these are this year's numbers, and we voted last year with the numbers that were up higher, closer to forty.
Oh, so they, so they can change.
Gone down.
They can change.
So, there's a twenty percent change, does that happen often in our numbers?
What he's trying to say is, I think, get at is, it's a two-year process, and so the year, last year's process, Hartwood was at a thirty-nine, a forty percent. And it'll keep that status for two straight years before it gets recalculated, right?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm, I'm just surprised that a number would go down by twenty, the school would go down by twenty percent, and it's free and reduced, you know, go from forty percent to thirty-two percent. It's just, okay, so if those, if those numbers are, you, you're sure me those numbers are accurate, I'll take your word for it.
Those numbers are accurate.
Okay.
And just to, just to add on the.
It's just the title that's not accurate.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
The.
And, excuse me, Missy, can you give us this chart before we go, leave tonight?
I don't actually have it, I sent the email to Mr. Townsend asking him to get it.
Okay, I, I think there's some interest in having that to study.
I want to check, yeah, I would like to check those free and reduced lunch numbers, just to make, again, this is what happens, is that there's different data points, and we've been using September thirtieth as our data point. And I just want to check with Nutrition Department, that what their numbers are saying. So, somebody doesn't go to the DOE website and sees one number, and we're showing another number. So, we'll get it to you very early tomorrow, just so we could, I mean, I, I mean, unless you really want it tonight, we'll send it to you tonight, but.
Well, I want to copy the chart, just because it's public and it's being presented. If it changes, that's okay, but for my purposes, I, I like to have all the information. But if it's, you know, if it's any, I'm, I'm not suggesting it's incorrect, I'm just saying I am surprised at the change from just last year in, in some of these numbers.
Twenty points is a huge change, so I would have, that's why I want to check it.
Well, it's just, it was eight percent, but it's eight, eight points, but eight percent here, which is twenty percent of the, you know, the, the difference. That is a big drop, with, with no change in the student populations. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Hazard, you had another question?
At the beginning of the, of your slides, if you even want to go back to them, there was a asterisk about something, ideal special education, something, and I didn't get what it was. So, if, if you explained it, could you re-explain it? But it was near the beginning, there it is, that's, that's the term, ideal special education program placement. Can you explain what that is? And if you did, I didn't get it the first time.
So, back in, it would have been late October, early November, I worked with Student Services and identified and plotted all of their special education low incidence program students by low incidence program. And then I conducted a nearest school analysis to yield, where are these, by their, by low incidence program, where are the nearest schools? Where are the, the hubs? I turned that raw data over to Student Services, and then they used their instructional expertise to say, okay, if one school is overloaded and the data says they should have five autism programs, but yet that's not best practice from an educational and instructional perspective. So, then they made their, their expert tweaks to that data-driven model, and then we implemented that in the program capacity.
So, I know something that the board talked about at our single meeting with the consultant, was whether there was gonna be a potential analysis of the best-case scenario for special education. So, you're saying you all have conducted that, and that is being put on top of this?
Staff did that. Steph, we, we did that analysis, that's the same, it was, it would be the standard way, just nearest school analysis, and then turn that data over to special ed, or Student Services, as they are the experts in their field of teaching this.
And it was determined that there is the space, and that's why the numbers were.
Well, actually, so, the way that it's implemented.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm really not gonna be getting it, I'm sorry.
So, you implement it into the program capacity, and then that utilization percentage is used throughout the redistricting process. So, by implementing it into the program capacity numbers, you're thereby assuming and assuring that those programs are placed there through all assumptions throughout the redistricting project.
Did that assume an additional classes for next year?
I'm told yes.
How many? Sorry.
One, I'm, I'm told one autism and one EBS, one additional.
Okay, only two classes, okay.
Okay, now, are you, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Chase, you go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I was gonna ask is just, we have, you know, you have projections of how much our student population will increase. And we also have some knowledge of what's, what's the, you know, what, what is the typical national or state percentage of students with particular disabilities? So, did we plan for that in terms of how, how that might be changing in the course of ten years? So, so let's say the special education population is maybe ten percent, and so, have we got that sort of worked in there as well?
The only thing worked into the program capacity calculation was those next-year class adds. With the attempt that, in an ideal perfectly balanced scenario or plan that the consultants would come up with, the best balance you could do would be, at four years out, eighty-five point six percent. So, the hope would be there's room to allow those, those schools to grow as needed.
Okay, and I have a, a final follow-up question, or maybe final on this special ed. Do the, the program capacities that we, were used, that were given to the consultants that were used, do they provide for the same special ed programs in the same schools next year as they're in this year?
Not necessarily.
Okay, that's information we're gonna have to share with the public. Because as traumatic as it is for anyone to be, you know, reassigned by redistricting, my understanding is it's even more so for some special ed students. So, when we're out there and we're putting this information out about, you know, the Plan A and Plan B, we also need to, to put out what the proposal is for any changes in the, the special ed, which would also entail saying where they are currently, where the programs are currently. It's not gonna guarantee, you know, someone's gonna be in a particular program, but at least they'll know if there is a, a, you know, a plan to change, because if. at least they'll know if there is a, you know, a plan to change, because if we're looking at the overall capacity, we're not going to have much flexibility once we make the decision on how many students are in the school. So that, that is, in speaking for myself, is crucial to get out to the, the community. Do we have any other questions or comments? I'm sure we'll, here are lots of more questions at the town hall meetings, we've got, first one coming up next Tuesday, one Thursday, and the Tuesday after that. There's no more questions right now, if you want, we can take a nice break before our 7:00 o'clock meeting.
Put these questions and answers on the website for the public to see, I mean.
Well, this whole meeting is being taped, so any information that was, you know, any questions asked and answers given today will be part of that record.
Except originally, we had a website where we had questions and answers, that we have like a, yeah, so I'm thinking that we already, you know, have the public going there for a question and answers, and now we're turning around and saying, oh, yeah, go check that, you know, the tape. So I don't know if it will be nice to have everything there, these are the questions and ask, and these are the answers, so it would keep everything in one place, that's just a thought.
Well, I think we're starting on round two of the questions and answers, because now we have the proposed plans, so the questions are going to be much more distinct, I believe, or less general and more individual, now that we've got the proposals that are.
These were more my general questions, because.
So, so just real quick.
But that'll stay up on the website.
Right, okay, so back to website, so who's the website? Who's the webmaster for the questions and answers? Who's the point of con- is that you, Scott? Okay, so are we going to get, are we going to get a copy? I'd like to know what the, what the folks are, or do I just log in and see their questions and answers? And I want to know what you guys are answering as well, right?
On the website, we have the frequently asked questions, and we try to answer preemptively those frequently asked questions. To my knowledge, we haven't put full, every single question and every single answer on the website, and I wasn't aware of plans to do that.
Okay, Scott?
How would you, how would the board like us to gather that?
Well, that's, that's kind of where I'm, I just, I just want to make sure that, that the chair and we all know what's being asked.
That's correct.
And then, of course, if you answer something, I want to know what you guys said.
Correct.
And so that's, that's where I'm.
We are collecting input from the community through via email, Facebook, and those, those items that we listed. Now, if you want us to gather that data and then send it to you as part of any decision-making package.
Or we can go on the website.
Or just go on the website, it's just about transparency.
Or we can go on the website and see it, right?
Okay, we can certainly do that. In the past, we have provided that as the packages, you know, to the school board in their decision-making process, but if you'd like to be more transparent, we can stick it on the website and have a repository of questions and answers that staff has provided.
Yeah, that, I think that would baseline the board members, right?
And then if you could introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Scott.
For watching us.
I'm Scott Haran, Assistant Superintendent for Operations. I'm sorry, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Haran.
You bet.
All right, so we will be back, the work session is ended, and we'll be back at 7:00 for our meeting. Thank you.